And I keep recording, yeah. Okay. Welcome to the Larkspur Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, December 12. I hear an echo. Could we please have a roll call, please?
President Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Swisher.
Present.
And Chair Chalmers.
Present.
Okay, Commissioner Williamson is absent.
So do we have, well, first of all, this is a great turnout. And I really appreciate everyone coming out this evening. Since I've been on the commission, this is the most number of people that we've had in here. So we don't, as you can see, we didn't have enough chairs. And I want to thank the staff for preparing a really great presentation tonight. They're going to be talking to us later this evening about the main item on the agenda. And we really appreciate everyone come out to share their comments. But before we move on to that, do we have any public comments for matters that are not on the agenda? So nothing to do with the housing element and the sites. The agenda was posted online at the website.
The, the only item on the agenda is the housing element and general plan. There's no other items.
That is the only item. So if you have anything else that you would like to bring up this evening. One comment. Yes.
At the, at the microphone, please.
Would you like to come to the microphone and if you could introduce yourself, please?
Hi, my name is Dave Steinberg. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Totally unrelated, and I've been wondering about this for years. When you walk on the old railroad trail, there's the old railroad building was closed up. And I've always wondered the history. Has the city thought about opening it up, giving tours, or at least putting some kind of a plaque in front of it with the history of it? I thought that would be interesting.
That is interesting. I don't have an answer for that.
Staff may do. Yeah, the Heritage Preservation Board is actively working on plaques. And that is one of the.
Oh, the heritage?
Yeah.
Can I give you my name later? Maybe they, I can work with them or get on and contact.
Uh, yeah, if, if you want, I, I can certainly get your contact information from you later and.
Anise, is that right? She has my contact.
Okay. Perfect.
Hey, thank you.
I just want to make a public comment.
Uh, could you please introduce yourself?
Nancy Reese.
Nancy Reese.
Nancy Reese. Did you not expect the turnout here? And could you not have provided more seating? And perhaps you guys should be standing and we should take your chairs.
Would you like to take my chair?
I think other people might like to take. It's, it's just unfathomable. You know, this is a big issue and yet people cannot sit down comfortably. I think that's a big mistake.
Well, point taken, thank you. And maybe in the future, we'll have to find another location to host one of these meetings. At the school.
Can I make a comment, please? Number one, can I make a comment, please? Everybody on this panel here are volunteers. We are planning commissioners that do not get paid, we're volunteers. And one of the most important hallmarks of civic discussion is civility. So I would really appreciate if people would be civil. Uh, we did not anticipate that, I mean, maybe we should have anticipated it. But, but you know what? Because every, have, have you been to meetings before this? Do you know how many people are usually at meetings? One, right. Uh, my point is, my point is, is that we all are on the same side. And I would just really appreciate, because I mean, you'll find, I think, that everybody, including people on this board, probably feel exactly the way you do about the issues that are being presented here today, as opposed to understood. But the, the way that this is City Hall, and this is the building that has been supplied by City Hall for community meetings. In the future, I think you're possibly right. When we do anticipate this, maybe we can find another place to do this, like the school would be a good example. Uh, there's other potential community centers, but as it is, this is City Hall.
And we're also planning to build a new library and a community center. If people would like to donate to that, I'm sure this would.
Yeah.
Also help.
So that's.
Getting the space that we need.
Noted.
This is what we have right now, so. I, I think you'll find that we will address the notices. That was a question I also had. And we can, we will address the official notice. So, so it looks like we're jumping straight to the one public item. So let's open the, the item for the housing. And could you please wait your turn? There were many people who are in this room who really have something to say. And the commissioners also have questions. And if the same three or four people continue to talk, the people who are here have been really patient, won't have an opportunity to speak. So I know we want to hear from everyone tonight. And the more we delay this, we're going to run out of time.
And, and the concern is noted, and I, and I agree with you. So.
Okay, so opening the one public item we have on the agenda tonight, which is the consideration of the updated housing element. We could. It is on. Can you not hear me? Okay. Well, if the people who could perhaps move forward. And there's a whole. And there's some room here along the sides. Okay, I'm going to keep us moving. But the, this, the one item on the agenda tonight, I'm afraid this is the best I can do with the voice that I have tonight. You know, I'm losing my voice, I'm doing the best I can. So I hope you can, I, can people at the back hear me? Great, people at the back can hear me, thank you. If you would like to come further forward, you're very welcome to. So the public hearing item tonight is to consider the 2023, 2030, 2031 housing element update. If we could please have the staff report. Oh, actually, before I do that, I'm going to make some comments that I wanted to say myself about this, I wrote this earlier. And I know staff, I wanted to give it a bit of background and also reiterate what Jeff said tonight about the, the planning commissioners. So, and I know staff will explain this in more detail. But as you all know, we are updating the housing element for the period 2023 to 2031. And it's in this housing element that we're going to address this city's housing requirement. So the state of California, they dictate what the regional housing requirement, requirement is through what they call RENA, and that's the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And for the city of Larkspur, we have been told it's 979 units. And this includes a specified number of extremely low income, low income, moderate income, et cetera. So the staff has been working really hard with the Housing Element Committee and members of the public to identify 17 sites that can accommodate the seven, 979 units that we're supposed to, to identify. So one of the key purposes of this meeting tonight is to hear your comments, the public's comments. And I want to remind that if you're on Zoom, you will not be able to make any comments tonight. So you will need to be here in person. So the staff will start with their presentation and then we will open, open the forum to public comment. And I have a couple of requests, which I'd like you to consider now if you'd like to speak. There are a lot of comments that we want to hear. So if you could keep your comments to two minutes, we can try and get through everyone tonight. And secondly, when you make your comment, it would be really helpful to us and to staff if you could identify your preferred site. So if you have a site that you prefer, if you could communicate that to us and tell us why you prefer that site over the other sites, or if there's two or three that you prefer, if you could tell us that too. Um, and um, I also want to reiterate what Jeff just said, which is that, um, all five of us on the planning commission. Uh, we also live in this community and we actually care a, a lot about what we're going to discuss tonight. And we have very, very similar concerns to the rest of you. And that is, is the reason why we are, we all have day jobs. And that's why we volunteer our time to come here and do this, because we really do care about this community. So thank you, I'm going to pass over to staff for that presentation.
So do you want me to come over there? Okay, thanks. Um, I just wanted to be clear again tonight, there's no decision that will be made tonight. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments from everyone. And, um, for the planning commission to provide any direction that they have, if they have any tonight. Um, the, the, this item on the housing element will be continued. And given all the turnout tonight, it's entirely possible that we could schedule a public workshop or something else, um, after this meeting. So just again, no decision is going to be made tonight, but we do want to take your comments since you've come all the way here to make comments on this plan. The general process for the housing element so far, it started a couple of years ago. Um, and the city council formed a housing steering committee that's met 12 times. Then there was other community workshops and focus groups. These were all primarily led by, uh, EMC, who is the housing element consultant, who's, who's not here. Um, our, our project manager has, uh, left for a different job. So, um, they did data collection, analysis, reviewed, uh, essentially prepared the, the bulk of that large document that's posted on the internet. And then, um, checked in with the state housing and community development department to see if the city's on track with this housing element. The steering committee reviewed the first draft of the housing element, uh, which included many of the sites that you have, um, that are proposed tonight. And then, um, a draft was of the whole housing element was released for a 30-day public notice period and then submitted to the state Department of Housing and Community Development. The state rejected the housing element and noted a number of items that we needed to update in order to bring it into compliance. And so this, the city consultants prepared a second draft that, that, um, addressed those comments and it's been, it was posted again for public review and then resubmitted to HCD to see if, um, if it, if it's, uh, if it meets their requirements for housing elements. So at this point, we're waiting for the state to give us comments back on the second draft. Um, and we're bringing this draft to the planning commission for comments and we're still soliciting comments from the public. So this is not, this is not the final document and there'll be additional hearings after this for comments and consideration. We wanted to tell you what we've been doing, um, up until this point for public comment. There was a website and it included a, uh, interactive, interactive map where people could, um, select sites and put comments on sites, uh, as well as provide comments on the draft housing element. Postcards were mailed to all the residents. There was, there was, um, 12, 12 steering committee hearings. Flyers were posted at public locations. Um, flyers were hand delivered to businesses and shops about the housing element being available. We had tenant focus groups, there's been postings on Nextdoor on Twitter and Instagram. Um, and then there was a, a survey that was provided and we received a number of comments on those. And then consulted with the federated or the Native American Indian tribe, although they, they didn't ever elect to, um, speak with us about the, the housing element. So for this, um, I will say that with all those meetings, that we had very low turnout for the 12 housing steering committee meetings, of which Brock is a member. I think we, we would maybe get one or two developers at the meeting. So this is a surprise to us, um, or because we were, because we were getting so little turnout on this, for this meeting, rather than just doing the published notice and the IJ, which I would assume people wouldn't read. Um, we did decide to mail the notice and then actually give really specific information on the sites, because up until this point, we've been telling people there's a housing element and nothing's been specific about what's going on in anyone's neighborhood. So for this occasion, we mailed public notice that was customized for each of the sites in order to tell people what's going on in their specific neighborhood. That was mailed to owners within 300 feet of the site, um, like a radius. Um, and I know that with condominium associations, some people are, they're, the way their mapping system works, it didn't pull in everyone from a condo. We could fix that for future mailings. But but that's, I think, what's resulted in this great turnout, because the word got out with those mailings. Uh, we also mailed the occupants of all the sites, the tenants, um, of some of them bounced back and also the businesses where the, that are listed in the sites inventory. And then we've, um, we mailed out notice of this meeting to everyone that's on our email list for the housing element and general plan update. And, and we will put everyone who's submitted an email comment on those lists. And if you want to be on, um, the list, you could email planning@cityoflarkspur.org and we're happy to add you to, to lists. So you'll get the notice sooner than you would if it's mailed. So we're going to play something that was played at the first kickoff meeting in February of 2022, that gives a background on the housing element.
So let's start with the basics. What is a housing element? How's the element is, is part of the general plan? It's a visionary, yet detailed policy document. It's required by state law to be updated every eight years. And that's more frequently than your general plan. And Larkspur currently is in the, so let's start with the basics. What?
Room up front here, if people want to come in and sit down, if someone.
You know what? And there's a chair here we should use.
Who's disabled or elderly are welcome to have my chair.
There's one extra chair here as well, if anyone wants to take this chair.
Does anybody who can't stand want my chair?
Move forward. That'd be fine, and everyone that's standing will be in the.
Of course, we have to worry about the act degress for fire safety, that's all.
Is there anyone still out in the corridor? Is there anybody still outside in the corridor that would like to come inside? Is daddy? Is there, anybody still outside in the corridor that would like to come inside?
There's two chairs up front, right here.
Thank you. Is there anybody still out there that wants to come in? Not really getting a, is that a no? No, okay. And we've had two offers of chairs from up here. If anybody wants to get a chair, who doesn't have a chair, could they please put their hands up? There's another chair up here and I'm happy to give up my chair and Commissioner Swisher's happy. We can all stand. That chair is available. Okay, last call for chairs. All right. All right, well, thank you and thanks for your patience. We will continue with the presentation. Do you want one of our chairs? Here we are. Do you want to sit?
I stand in the operating room all day, so I'm happy to stand.
I'm the youngest one here.
Who's the youngest?
You. You know, there's a chair there now. I don't need to sit, I can just. Oh, he is. Thanks. Okay, you know what? I can just, hey, we'll take it in turns. Hey, you sit for a while and then I'll sit for Jeff.
What's that?
Sit and then I'll sit for them. We'll take it in turns. Okay. I'll take my tea. Okay. No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
All right. You good?
Commissioner Backer chair, that's cool.
Okay, don't worry about it.
It's fine, we're good. We're good. And, and like I say, I stand all day, so I'm happy to stand.
Well, we're going to take it in turns.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, there's a joke about anesthesiologists and surgeons is they, they stand, we sit. That's not true. We stand. All right. All right, so can we continue? All right.
Let's start with the basics. What is a housing element? Housing element is, is part of the general plan. It's a visionary, yet detailed policy document. It's required by state law to be updated every eight years. And that's more frequently than your general plan. Uh, and Larkspur currently is in the process of updating the general plan. So, um, we'll be making sure that those documents are all consistent with one another. So we're setting the stage to accommodate existing and projected future housing needs for people of all income groups. We will be selecting sites where new housing should go. We're looking for enabling capacity for housing to be built. We're also mandated to select how many units could be built on each of the potential sites that we come up with. And, uh, to outline, outline programs and policies to encourage development. It's important to understand that the city of Larkspur doesn't build the housing, uh, unlike some larger cities that, that may. Um, instead, the housing element update process is an opportunity for us to make sure that there's enough capacity for those who can and, and may build housing in the future, that it's possible, that there's a, and a predictable path to be able to do that. So the key components of the housing element will be, um, incorporating an analysis of housing need, evaluation of constraints, identification of sites. And then we'll be bringing forward to the public a housing plan with goals, policies, programs, and quantified objectives. With this sixth, sixth cycle housing element update, there's also a special focus on affirmatively furthering fair housing. It's also understood as AB 686 and public engagement. We want to make sure that this is, uh, radically inclusive, that anyone who, uh, wants to be a part of this or who would be impacted by how this policy document would be drafted, either those who currently live in Larkspur, who, who would like to live in Larkspur, that they can participate. The general roles for every jurisdiction, it, it takes problem solving as a team. And, uh, it includes future neighbors, current neighbors, policymakers of several scales, including local decision makers, like your planning and city, planning commission and city council. The regional decision makers, uh, we know that, um, and we'll get to that in a little bit. Association of Bay Area Governments and the state housing and community development. The policy that we create together will affect the relationship between city staff and developers. So the rules specific to the city of Larkspur, we, uh, we at EMC Planning Group are working closely with both city staff and the steering committee. And encouraging public, public engagement and feedback at every stage. As we then bring that information through the planning commission, city council, and ultimately to HCD to request for certification. So I may have already mentioned the word or the, the phrase RENA. It's an acronym and it stands for Regional Housing Needs Allocation. This is the number of homes allocated between now and 2020, between 2023 and 2031 at varying affordability levels. This has been assigned to the city of Larkspur by, uh, AAG or the, uh, Bay Area Region and, excuse me. The area, Bay Area, excuse me. And the California Department of Housing and Community Development. So the RENA for Larkspur's six cycle housing element, uh, the total is 979 units. And among that number of units that we need to allocate for, you can see that approximately 30% of it would need to be, um, understood as capable of, of very low housing, very low income housing being built there. 17% or 168 units of low income housing, 14.8% moderate income and 375 units of above moderate income. The consequences of non-compliance for enabling this capacity with our housing policy has, has, uh, grown in its list. So there would be a limited access to state funding for, um, not only housing related things, but also for transportation. Uh, there's the potential for lawsuits, not only from the state, but also from the public at large and housing advocates. There could be court mandated compliance as a consequence and legal fees could be incurred. There could also be court imposed fines. Um, this would be, um, this list sort of, uh, builds in its intensity so that the, the most intense consequence that is now a part of the, um, enforcement that HCD has at its reach is receivership. And that would be suspension of local control on building matters entirely and court approval of housing developments. So leading with equity, I want to bring on our amazing team. We've got Lee Robinson, Kristin Masters, and behind the scenes, we've got Chris Kifer. And I'm, I'm going to hand it off to you.
All right, fantastic. Thank you so much, Andy. Um, so hello, everyone, welcome. It's fantastic to be here with you all and we're really excited about these conversations that we're going to have. Um, so next up, my colleagues and I want to talk a little bit about leading with equity and why. And you may be asking yourself, well, wait a minute, what is equity? What do you mean by equity? Um, on the next slide, I want to talk to you all about this image. I really love to use this image when I'm talking about equity. And maybe some of you all have seen it, maybe some of you all have not, it's all good. So in this image, we have equality versus equity. Okay, so we have these folks at a ballgame, right? All three folks are at a ballgame watching this amazing game, all right? The boxes are distributed differently, right? So on the left side, all the boxes are the same, okay? So on the far left, that guy can totally seem, see the game. He can see everything that's happening, he has no obstruction, right? The middle, this person can see the game too, you know, he's on the fence, but he can also see the game. So the far right, this little person, this, this young person can't see the game at all, right? Okay, so that's equality. That's all the boxes are the same. Now, on the right side, we have equity, where the boxes are distributed differently. On the far left, there's no box and he can still see the game, right? The middle has one box still and that person can still see the game as well. Now, on the far right, the person has two boxes now and this person can now see the game, okay? This person can now experience what the others are experiencing, watching the game, enjoying the environment, enjoying the situation. All right, so the difference is, is equity is based on need and not on the one size fits all, right? Now, folks may be thinking, wait a minute, but isn't equality a better fit? Isn't it fair if everyone gets the same amount? That might make some sense, but as you all can see here, fairness isn't always the best fit. We see that in this scenario, okay? Now, we get to explore the housing element update through an equity lens. And what does that mean? It means that we have an opportunity to be specific about what the needs are, what? What people's personal needs are and circumstances are, and they're going to look very different. Okay, we get to hear voices that may not have been heard in the past. And we get to seek out those voices and work towards addressing those needs. Also, we get to navigate some of those barriers to address those needs. And this is where it becomes a little challenging, right? When we're kind of addressing some of those barriers, we may be having some challenging conversations, right? About race and various identities, histories and, and some of the stuff that's kind of challenging to look at sometimes, right? So when we're talking about equity, we're talking about being more engaged. All right, thank you so much, Kristin. Um, so this question here, why does Larkspur need to plan for more housing? All right, and this is the piece around caring, okay? Because Larkspur is a community that cares, right? There are many ways to care. We can care for our neighbors, we can care for our communities. And on the slide, we see caring for our neighbors, ensuring that our fellow residents can continue to live here, right? Also, caring for our community. Become a more inclusive Larkspur by creating housing opportunities for all community members. And that's where we get to see our communities thrive, right? We get to see our residents in our communities. We get to see this beautiful community that's thriving and people are able to live there and have, um, this experience and call that place home, right? So, um, we also have two other major components in place to help guide us when we're talking about the caring piece. Um, and my colleague Andy's going to talk a little bit more about those on the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Lee. I, I wanted to take this opportunity to share with everyone the, the precise language of the law. So this new legislation, AB 686, affirmatively furthering fair housing is to take meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on specific protected characteristics. So our goals for AFFH, specific to the housing element, we're going to attempt to address significant disparities in housing needs and in access to opportunity. Replace segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living patterns and foster. and foster and maintain compliance with civil rights and fair housing law. So let's start.
Oh, that's okay. So we just wanted to address that because it's one of the major components of housing elements and a lot of communities in other jurisdictions and actually Larkspur have not gotten housing elements approved if we're not addressing the affirmatively fair housing component. And I just wanted to give a brief overview. I'm sure most of us know this just from experience that, that Marin County is a predominantly white community compared to the Bay Area. And one of the things that the housing elements are trying to address is segregation. And here nearby, our primary area where you can see in blue in Santa Fel is there's a large Hispanic and Latino population that's concentrated in the canal area of Santa Fel. And by building housing in other parts of Marin County, especially affordable housing, we're hoping to address some of those issues. So the housing element has goals, policies and programs. I'm not going to go over them all tonight because it's a really long document, but the primary goals are to facilitate housing construction, to protect affordable housing and improve housing stock, which is a bit, had been, has big, a big topic this year with the tenants at Skylark and tenant concerns about raising rent and people moving out of the community because they can't afford to live here. With, the city wants to provide new affordable and special needs housing and exemplify sustainable development and energy conservation. And then also publicize housing needs and resources. There's a number of programs or policies that follow those programs in the housing element. And then there's programs to try to implement them. And just the highlights of those programs is a housing priority overlay zone that would allow certain sites to be developed by right and only subject to objective design and development standards. And that's to encourage, encourage those sites to be developed for housing. There'd be custom standards available for some sites if there's site specific circumstances that need to be addressed. And those could be modified. There's a draft that's, was presented for the planning commission tonight, but it's just a draft. And then inclusionary housing, the city's inclusionary housing would still be required, which right now requires a 20% affordable. So each project has to provide 20% affordable housing, but it does offer an out for developers to pay an in lieu fee. And that also could be changed to just require the 20% affordable housing if someone wanted to build under this housing overlay zone. We didn't propose it as just a requirement for develop, for including the housing because the city also needs housing to preserve units and also to construct units on, on the city lot. And then the commercial uses would still be allowed on, on, on the overlay zone sites. So it wouldn't preclude commercial development. And, and that's actually what's anticipated by the zoning in most of these districts. There's a known at loss policy that's required so that we can't approve any projects that would result in loss of housing units. Housing units have to be replaced if they're being removed. And then also the city has to be mindful that if one of the sites doesn't get developed at the numbers that are being proposed, that we have to make sure we have other adequate sites available to make, to, so that we maintain that 875 units that were required to build. 975. So let me, we're going to get to that in a second, but I'll just, I'll mention it now. So 979 units is what the state is requiring or Association of Bay Area Governments. However, the city's already, or gets to count units that were under construction as of June 30th. And since we had the large affordable housing project on South Aliso, as well as we're continuing, continuing to get a lot of ADU units, that the number is only 875 now. The city is seeking to replace six deed restricted units that will be lost during the planning period. Those are units that were deed restricted as a part of other housing developments, other condominium projects that are now like living through their, their 30-year deed restriction. So that would be another reason to, to try to get funding is to, to replace those units in the city. And then one big project the city has is to partner with the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center. Actually, most of the, all the communities in Marin County are going to be merging with that center to facilitate ADU development. And that would mean personal assistance for property owners to develop accessory dwelling units. And they just offer a whole host of services that I won't get into today. But to date, ADUs have been our, that's been our primary means of developing housing. The general plan and the housing element would allow residential uses in the AP zoning district, which is primarily that area that's around the, the west end of South Aliso, near, near the hospital. And then there's a policy to promote fair housing awareness. And some of our larger landlords have been the subject of like settlements with the fair housing organizations because of, for example, not renting to section eight tenants and not allowing service animals. And so if the larger, if the larger landlords are making those mistakes, that we are concerned that some of the smaller landlords may not be aware of their requirements as well. So a hope is to try to promote or provide information to landlords so everyone's aware of their requirements under fair housing laws. What's the next slide? Because let me talk about that when we get to the numbers. Okay, so the sites inventory is what everyone's here for tonight, I'm sure. The city's down to 875 units. So the 20, this is, and this is what makes it difficult. So we're required to build 875 units, which more than half are required to be affordable. Most projects don't come in with 100% affordable housing. So we're, and we only require 20%. So in order to, if we're only doing projects that have 20% affordable housing, we'll have to build thousands of units in order to get to 875. So that's why there's a lot more market rate units in the housing element than, than are actually required. I kept the median, or I brought the median income in case anyone was wondering, but we can skip that slide. It just details what the affordability limits were. Oh, we can go back. Okay. So for housing, so just as an example, a household of four would be considered low income if they're making $140,000. So, and then in that same line, a moderate income household of four is $210,000. So because our moderate incomes are so high, the, the, the ink, and because, and everything's so expensive, the low income and moderate income household income is actually fairly high. So when, when we're designating units for low income housing or affordable housing, they're looking at not spending more than a third of those incomes on housing costs. Section eight, there, there's income limits for section eight, but the section eight program essentially pays market rates to the landlord and then just gives the tenant whatever, whatever amount of income they need to afford the rent. Landlords are required by state law to take section eight tenants. But you can, you can take, you have choices of to who to rent to, credit checks. They're the standard options for renting to someone, but you can't deny someone based on their source of income if it's section eight. So if anyone didn't hear, he's asking, what's the time period for building these 875 units? So it's, we're supposed to plan for 875 units over the next eight-year planning period. So between now and 2031, our last eight-year planning period, we only had to plan for 132 units. And the sites that were identified for those units, I don't think any of them were built, but we did make the number based on ADUs and the affordable housing projects that have come through. So if those, if those sites are not constructed, we could use them for the next eight-year cycle. But at, at, when 2031 rolls around, they'll come up with a new number for us, which could be lower. It could be higher. Some, some years have been, I think the, the cycle before this one, we were close to 875 too. So it, it really depends on what numbers are coming out of the state and then how that's distributed through the Association of Bay Area Governments. So if the number comes down, sites could be downzoned to comply. That, that often, I haven't seen that happen much, but that's always a possibility.
Can I just, are we going to accept questions now or are we going to wait till the end?
Good question. We, we'll never get to comment. So.
Yeah. So if you could hold your questions and we will continue with presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we wanted to start off by showing, this is, this is the map of the sites that were start, everyone started considering back in February of 2022, when this process started. So there was a lot of downtown sites identified. There was a lot of North Magnolia sites identified. And so over the past year, the city's whittled down the sites based on owner interest, based on the concerns that were expressed at the initial meetings. And, and now we're down to 16 sites. And so the 16 sites are distributed in Larkspur Landing. There's one site in the Cost Plus Market area. There's one site in North Magnolia, one site in the Green Bonner, Von Air Hill area, and then several sites downtown. And then we're going to go through each of them just to show what's identified at each site. And then we'll be taking comments right after that.
Can we also confirm that this information is on the website, the maps?
There's a map of the sites on the website. And, and we can put this presentation on the, or this presentation will be on the.
I saw some people trying to take photos, but you can find it on the, on the city website.
Right. All right. So the first area that we're going to talk about is the Larkspur Landing area. And this area is considered a transit oriented community area by AAG and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. For the city's objective standards, it's considered a transit village. And the new objective standards allow buildings up to seven stories tall and 60 to 65 feet in height. The area is proposed for a density of 25 to 35 units an acre. Currently, it's a planned, it's all planned development zoning. So any project that's in this area today would have to go through a specific process through the planning commission to get anything developed. The, the MTC AAG has a new transit oriented community policy that requires the city to zone the area for 35 units an acre minimum. So this definitely is an area where density could be increased if that was, that, if that was desired. And that would definitely pull the pressure off of other areas of the community to provide that density. And so the first site, A, in the housing element is 700 to 1100 Larkspur Landing Circle. And this is just under a 10-acre site with the proposed zoning, this, this site. This is right next to the movie theater on Larkspur Landing Circle. So right adjacent to the freeway, there's, there's several office buildings. And there's no proposal to remove the office buildings, but there is a desire by the property owner to build housing in the back parking lot that's towards the hillside there. And so the site, the site zoning that's proposed would allow a maximum of 330 units. The site's being included in the housing element for 235 units, which is in the range of what the, the developer has expressed interest in developing. Marin Country Mart is the next site, Site B. And that site too, that the property owner is not interested in removing any of the commercial spaces. However, the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond site is vacant and that provides an opportunity for housing. It's in the housing element. So it's, it's the largest site in the, probably maybe in the city, but it's the largest site in the housing element at almost 16 acres, which would allow a maximum of 559 units. However, the city is just anticipating if it's developed, it would just be developed in the area of Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. And so it's just been included for 20 units with primarily market rate housing. It's a 16-acre site. So bed, we're anticipating the housing being developed only in the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond area. And then, which is about a five acre, five acre area. And then the, the Ros Valley Sanitary District owns the, the most promising housing development sites, which are two sites that are currently vacant, with the exception of some Ross Valley Sanitary, like a pump station. They are, the, the total, or there's one site that's 1.5 acres where they had intended to put their offices, but they've moved their offices to Santa Fel. Up to 53 units would be allowed on that site and 50 are proposed with all affordable housing. And then 2000 Larkspur Landing Circle is the larger site that's just over nine acres. And up to 321 units would be allowed with the proposed zoning. And, and the site's been included for 270 in the housing element. And the, the site currently has approval for 126 units from a prior plan that, that hasn't been constructed. The. Oh, well. 270. They're saying 775 for that area alone. Right. And then 14, 14th Sir Francis Drake is another site that's proposed in the housing element. And the, the proposal here would be, is, it's only been included for market rate units. And the proposal would be to only put housing in, I guess, where the western building's located, but keep the bike, the e-bikes store shop that's, that's currently doing well on the site. And this one has special conditions in the draft ordinance because it is adjacent to the water. So there's some conditions that have been included in, in order to protect any habitat and, and or any other sensitive areas that are by the site. So as, as mentioned, part of the city's allocation is market rate units as well. It's true that some of these ones that are only in for market rate don't have to be in for market rate. And we, like they'd be, we could easily take them out and still make our numbers. However, where there's owner interest in development, these would actually be some of the ones that we actually, that might actually develop. So we've left in ones where we've, where there's been owner interest in development because some, some sites may not develop. And at least the, the ones that do want to develop will be able to get some housing from. I'm going to turn it over to you for this one. Want me to keep going? I don't have the number on this one though, do you? Okay, so this is, this is the Cost Plus Market site. And there was owner interest in being in the housing element. So this one is proposed at 35 to 45 dwelling units an acre, which is, which is on the higher end. Again, the Larkspur Landing was 25 to 35. And this one is included in the housing element for, I put here somewhere, 151 units. Okay. So the, the zoning would allow probably more units than that because that site is also large. But we would be expecting that the retail stores would stay. 196, sorry, 196 units. We would expect that the retail stores would stay and that they would just be adding housing units to the site. There's no. Yeah, so there's, so we, parking, well, parking's not required for the housing. There may be ways that they could build it without taking over the commercial parking. Flood zone.
Could we let her finish the presentation, please?
The, the design of, nothing's been designed for this site. It's possible nothing is built at this site. If they wanted to build, they could do a ground floor parking with units above since it is in a flood zone and also a sea level rise area. So that's, there's, nothing's been designed for the site yet.
Can I just make a comment that this is all predicated upon developer interest in doing this kind of thing? Again, just to repeat, this is not Larkspur building these sites. It is, is due to the pre-market and a developer wanting to come in and build these units, which of course, you know, if you look at the North Magnolia site, that site is now seemingly on hold because it is below underwater. And they're selling, trying to sell the entitlements. So just keep in mind, this is not Larkspur building these units. It's a developer interest in this. Just, so just keep that in mind. Yeah. I don't know.
I don't think it's under the purview.
So, so let's continue the presentation so we can see what the rest of the sites are.
And they're asking if there's owner interest for A, B, C, D, and F. So there's owner interest for A, for sure. B, there, there's no, the owner hasn't, he's, he's open to being on the housing element site. That's the Marin Country Mart. Then for C and D, those are the sanitary district sites. They're definitely interested. And they're waiting for us to rezone the sites in order to start seeking. They're definitely interested and they're waiting for us to rezone the sites in order to start seeking developers. And then F was interested in staying on the list, but we don't know if they're going to pursue housing in the next eight years. Oh, Greenberry, okay. So now we're moving to Greenberry. And so these next two sites. These are in our objective standard. So this is, this is the site where Southby's Real Estate is listed, but I believe this, I believe it's listed for rent possibly at the moment. And then the second site is higher on the hill there on Drake's Landing Road, one thousand, where there's a, a law office or office building constructed. And for the Southby site at one eight nine Sir Francis Drake, no owner interest has been expressed in development. It was just listed because it has an op, a site that could come up. The, the leases were coming up during this housing period. And we were, they're anticipating an owner could be interested in development. So the one thousand, one eight nine Sir Francis Drake Boulevard site is, would be zoned to allow thirty-six units maximum. We've included it in the housing element for twenty-five units that I believe are primarily market rate. And then the one thousand Drake's Landing Road site, it would have eighteen units maximum allowed, but but the owner has already expressed interest in doing a lower density. And there was correspondence even tonight asking to go to twenty-one units an acre, which is essentially what the units currently zoned for. So some of the, some of the property owners have actually expressed interest with the minimum densities being too high because they want to do lower density development. And then this next site is the Tamil Pious site. Five oh one Via Casitas. And the idea at this site was to allow additional density. So the site's completely way over our existing density limits because of the, the very tall structure with two, I think, two hundred and ninety-six housing units. So the proposal was it, was to increase density to fifty to fifty-eight units an acre in order to allow an additional forty-eight units to be developed at the site. And the, we were envisioning those units would be going at the lower level of the site where there's currently a parking lot for the employees, not to necessarily preclude parking for employees, but to work around it or build above it. And then for this site, because of a, a number of residents have expressed concern with the existing parking situation, saying that there's inadequate site parking currently because they not, the employees might have parking there, but apparently a lot of residents also have aides that come to the site that may not be allowed to park in the employee's site, or maybe there's not room. So they park along the streets there. So it's making it difficult for emergency vehicle access or accessing driveways for adjacent residents. So this is one of the sites where the cities received concerns. There is a, a addition of a condition added into the draft ordinance that requires them to do a parking study and analysis and implement measures to improve the current parking situation if they were to pursue a housing project there. And so that's included as, the forty-four units already included in the, to get, that's what got some of the units down to eight seventy-five, the forty-four units that were built there.
Okay, I'm going to handle all the downtown sites. So the first one is Site J. This is the Mount Tam Racket Club, one Larkspur Plaza. The site is three and three quarters of, of an acre. And the proposed density, much like all of the downtown sites that we'll be going through, is thirty-five to forty-five units an acre. The capacity for it in the housing element is a hundred and sixty-nine units. And you can see the, the affordability mix break down at the bottom of the text there. It's thirty very low income, eleven low income, eleven moderate, and a hundred and twenty-eight above moderate if it were to develop. Uh, next site, please. Uh, the next site is Lucky's. And just to be clear, it's not the entire complex there that it's a site. It's, it's just the property that's owned by Albertsons, I believe. So it's the building and a majority of the parking lot, but not the, not the shops on the, the right there or the gas station. Uh, the site is two, a little over two acres. It's proposed, like I said, at thirty-five to forty-five, uh, an acre in the housing element. And that would be, let's see here, that would be eighty-six units total on the Lucky site. My next site, please. And this is Site L. This is five fifty-seven and five fifty-nine Magnolia Avenue. These are just north of the theater. It's a very small site. It's a quarter of an acre. And the affordability mix is two low income, one moderate, and four above moderate. Uh, and the capacity in the housing element is just seven units. Okay, and the next site, Site M, is the train station. Uh, it's a little under an acre and a half, as you can see. The housing element units would be fifty total. And that's ten very low income, ten low income, ten moderate, and twenty above moderate income. And the Site N right there is the city parking lot. Uh, that's just under half an acre and that's proposed for twenty-eight very low income units. Section M, I, it, his question for anyone who can't hear it is about commercial spaces and will they or won't they be affected? Which one is Site M? Or the train station site? It's all, it's right along the bike path, you know, where the world green acai bowl place is and king of the role. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we can't all speak at once, so we're going to not be able to hear anybody. So there are a couple of buildings there that would be protected because they're historic. That entire site is a site that could be developed. So it, it really depends on what any potential housing developer is going to elect to do. Uh, it could, they could all remain and it could just be housing units built in the parking lots or everything there that is not, the warming station or the train station building may go away. It may be redeveloped to still have commercial with residential above. Uh, as we've said, it's, it's all very nebulous right now. There's really no, no definite plans on file for what might stay and what might remain. But it does bring up another thing I wanted to mention. We did get a lot of comments for the downtown specifically and about the historic nature of the, and the historic district down there. So hopefully to ease some concerns, any project in this area that's going to be in the district will still have to comply with the Secretary of the Interior standards for, that's what any project for a historic building will have to comply with. So anything, any new project would not be able to negatively impact the district. Site.
Wait, can we? Can we just continue with Alex's presentation for now? We'll come back to questions, please. Yeah, can we, can we just continue with this?
Public comment, please.
Come back because it, we're going to be here all night otherwise.
Okay, and the Site O here is the dentist office just down the street. Uh, it's a little over a third of an acre, a little under a third of an acre. And that's for two low income units, two moderate, and seven above moderate, a total of eleven units in the housing element there. And then the last one is in North Magnolia. This is the Masonic Lodge site. It's just under half an acre. This one's proposed for a little less density, twenty-five to, I think it's, should be thirty-five units an acre. And that's ten very low income units. And that is all the sites that we have.
All right, thank you very much to staff for preparing the presentation tonight. We really appreciate it. It was very detailed and very informative, so thank you. We can now go to public comment, right? So if anyone has a comment, if you could please, you can either start lining up. And I'm just going to remind everybody to.
Why don't we just have people raise their hands and come up? No, everyone's not standing up.
We could do that. I, you know what? I think we're going to have to have one or two people line up. Yeah. And again, if I could, if you, we're going to, we're going to have a timer going because there's a lot of people, I assume, are going to want to speak tonight. And if you could keep, keep your comments to two minutes. And if you do have a positive comment to make about a particular site that you heard tonight, we would really like to hear it and, and why as a, if that's. And if you could also please respect the people who are talking by not talking while they're trying to speak because we would like to hear the comments. Okay.
There'll be additional opportunities. Okay. There'll be other opportunities and we will take written comments as well. Yeah, any written comments and feel free to email questions and comments and we're happy to respond.
All right, thank you for that.
Or call, that's fine.
Give up your right to sue.
No, I don't think so.
I don't, I don't think you ever give up your right to sue. I mean, if you don't make a comment.
But there's a legal provision that we see in all notices that say that you have to raise the issue or you can't bring it up later.
Yeah, but that's always, you know.
Giving, we're not giving legal advice here tonight, so.
She's a lawyer.
So, and if these were all proposed in the housing element and rezoned to allow housing, they could all develop. There's no limit. Yeah, we, that's why we want your comments.
Yeah, but you know, yeah, but right now we haven't got to that point yet. Right now, we're still trying to establish what are the requirements.
The Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council ultimately decides. At all those stages.
Okay, thank you. If we could please have the first comment and we're going to start the timer.
Thank you.
And could you give your name as well when you start?
My name's John Hillis. I live in Heather Gardens here in Larkspur. And I've got probably Larkspur's youngest resident right now, James here. He's five weeks old. And he's done a very nice job sleeping through this so far. Um, I just want to say first, thank you to the Planning Commission. I know this is a really hard job. Appreciate what you all are doing. And, and I know there are a lot of people here tonight that are here to say not in my backyard. I'm here to say yes in my backyard. And I, I think you're probably not going to hear a representative portion of people saying that. And that's why, despite the fact that I haven't slept in over a month for, for more than a couple hours and, and I've got this guy here. I thought it was important to come tonight and share that. I would love to see housing get built in all of these places. I live in this community. I want to live in a high density, walkable community with vibrant shops and grocery stores and housing. And yeah, that, that's what I would like. I'm just sharing my own opinion. Please, please let me comment during my comment period.
The speaker, thank you.
Okay. You asked for specific recommendations. Would love to see more housing at Larkspur Landing. It's a great spot, lots of, you know, access to public transportation. Not, you know, right in the downtown area, which I, I think more people might be opposed to. Would love to see some housing on top of Lucky. I'd love to get a great vibrant grocery store there with some housing on top of it. I would love to see housing, you know, in, in other locations. But I think the key is like, as if, if, if we're going to call ourselves liberals, which I think many people here would, then you, you have to be okay with the fact that our communities are going to grow because they're growing for, for the future. And that's, you know, housing that's going to be here for a long time is going to impact guys like this and, and, you know, other people who are going to move here in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, uh, I have one page, I'll try to make it quick.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Sorry.
Could you give your name?
Oh, sorry, Dave Steinberg. I live at Spiglas. It's the condos across the street from the Tamil Pious. And I'm here to oppose the expansion of the Tamil Pious. First, I want to thank all the concerned citizens and board members for coming. I would like to share my concerns about the expansion of the Tamil Pious. I'm a long-term resident. I've been here thirty years, more than thirty years. It's Spig, it's Spingo, it's Spiglas condos. Reason I'm against a proposal and why you should be against it. I'm include, we already talked about parking as nose to nose. There's very little parking in there. And it, it's, it's hard to get places. I have to park a few blocks away sometimes. Tamil Pious delivery trucks, this has always been a problem. Always park illegally in the no parking parts of the street on Via Casitas. There's parts with, with red signs and, and, you know, red pavement. And when they do that, they've, I've been, they've been doing it for twenty, thirty years. I've been complaining and no one does anything. I've seen three parks simultaneously at the same time on the street waiting to get into the Tamil Pious. They block the road. No wide vehicles can get through. Fire trucks cannot get through. Amulets maybe could get through for Lucky. Via Casitas is very narrow. They block it for hours at a time. And they go, and they run their motors like at five, six in the morning and their backup lights. Um, I would say, I've talked to several Tamil Pious managers over the years. They've all promised me that they wouldn't have any deliveries below eight in the morning. And they wouldn't let the, the delivery truck stand on the street, but they all do it. And then they say it and it starts again a month ago. I've been to city council meetings and complained. They told me to call the police department. The police department says they can't do anything. They told me to call back the city council, who tells me to call the city manager, who tells me to call back the police department.
That's thirty, that's two minutes. Thanks.
Okay, okay, so.
You could just back up, we'll give you a.
There, there's been a revolving, you know, series of managers at the Tamil Pious. About three years ago, I started listing the name of the managers I've talked to there. They include the managers, Paul, Terrance.
Thank you, you know, David, thank you so much. You know, if you would like to put your comments, if you don't finish tonight. If you, if you don't finish tonight, because I know two minutes is very short to say everything you want to say.
This is what I hear every morning for thirty years. And I live a few hundred feet away from my bedroom.
I know, and I, and I hear you and thank you very much. Please put those in writing. They will go to staff and staff will distribute it to us.
Okay, one more thing. Here's a letter from one of the managers saying they would not park in the street, block the roads, which would get a lot worse with increased, you know, the people living there.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay.
A lot of people want to talk.
Now here's.
Yeah.
A lot of people want to talk, Dan.
Okay, one more thing, pictures.
Dave, a lot of people want to talk.
Yeah.
Okay, I took it at night.
That's fine, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, that's fine. You're monopolizing time now, thank you.
Okay, there's a timestamp on there, six thirty in the morning.
Got it.
And I will reassure you, other people have mentioned the same thing. So it's not just you, I know, right?
All right.
Thank you.
Two minutes.
Thank you, my name is Joanne Brand. I'm a resident of Corder Madera, but I'm in, uh, come to Larkspur every day. I'm a member of the Mount Tam Racket Club. And at one point in the talk about the housing, I heard the expression said that, that the development would help people thrive. If the racket club, I'll tell you what I saw this morning. I went to the racket club and the exercise room was full. There were people smiling. There were people, the, every lane of the pool was full. Most of the tennis courts were occupied. It's, it's a very important club. And if you want people to thrive, please don't take away the Mount Tam Racket Club.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Phil Burke. I live over in the Rose Lane area. And first I want to thank you all for the work on the commission and also the information you presented. And I was really, uh, the information that you presented tonight, I want to thank you.
You can lift a microphone.
Good idea. That, the information was very helpful to understand the different sites and what the plan is. I just want to say, uh, I, I do feel that additional housing is fine. I have no objections to that. It's mandated and also we do need more affordable housing in, in Marin. Some of the low income people that would be moving in, there would be like teachers and police who aren't, you know, investment bankers and stuff. So we need, we need to be able to have regular folks, you know, living in Larkspur. What I, what I am very concerned about is the loss of retail. One of the things I really liked about moving to Larkspur is I could walk to the gym and on the way home, I'd stop at the Lucky Store, uh, maybe stop at the taqueria, go to dinner at Japanese restaurants around there. And it's all walking and, and not a lot of driving. So, uh, and I live in a community of over fifty-five and a lot of. So and I live in a community of over fifty five and a lot of the folks there can't drive or do not drive. And for them, walking to a grocery store and walking to these businesses is really important part of the quality of life for the folks. So if we can have the housing but keep the retail, that would be ideal. So if it's building on top, you know, building housing on top of Lucky store or the new store that someone mentioned or that would be excellent. One concern, another concern I have though is if the right now, the parking that's like at the corner of Ward and Magnolia is used for Left Bank and the the theater. A lot of the business there rely on having that parking available. And so even though the Left Bank and the theater and so on are not in that zone, if that parking was taken away, that might seriously impact our business. The same goes for that that mall where there's the Fukusuke and the Red Boy Pizza. They're not in the yellow zone, but if that parking was taken away, I don't know where their customers would park.
Thank you.
So I just uh.
Yeah.
Just would like to keep keep the retail.
Keep the retail, thank you.
Hi, I'm Gerald Young. I live at five, six, five Via Casitas, which is directly next door to the Tamil Pious. And I would like to say that I am not concerned about housing in my backyard. If it's made accessible. And by being accessible, the whole neighborhood is not accessible because of the parking shortage. There are very inconsiderate people who live, who work at the Tamil Pious, who park in red zones, block our driveway, park in all day in a in a twenty minute zone. It's posted in front of our house, the the postman can't park, they park in the middle of the street. The none of the salespeople can park. And I think before that site is further developed, parking has to be brought up to standard in some way so that the people, their neighbors can live. We have complained, as has that other gentleman, and nothing happens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Bill. I live in Greenbree. I can't comment for against any of the sites. Because I couldn't see anything that was presented tonight. I'd like to respectfully request for all future meetings, even if you only expect two people to show up. Simply arrange the chairs in such a way where people can see a screen. It's not that hard. Having said that, I do have a question. I don't know if you're allowed to answer questions in this. We've all seen how smoothly traffic has flown flows on Sir Francis Drake between one oh one and Manor after or and Wolfgrade after a multimillion dollar upgrade. Similarly, it travel it flows very smoothly from one oh one to San Quentin, similarly on Magnolia. My question is this, I'm being sarcastic for for effect, not not out of anger. My question is simply this, with the A bag numbers that are basically being forced on communities everywhere. Is their sole concern numbers of units? Is anybody looking at the collateral effects? And I know they all know no one's gonna drive a car because they're all gonna take mass transit sarcasm again. Is any part of this process dealing with the collateral issues? Traffic, water, sewage, police, everything else, because it seems that what I've observed with the Sir Francis Drake redo, and I know I went to many community meetings and I asked all the people because they wanted community input. Has anybody looked at future traffic volumes? No. And I'm concerned and and it's nothing that really any of us have any power over, but somebody has got to own the the ability to get some answers. Is everything gonna be done with blinders by checking boxes of numbers of units? And you either pass or you fail, or is anyone in this process monitoring traffic, water, sewage, et cetera? And I don't know if there's anything you can share with us.
Thank you. Do you want to join us at that? Yeah.
The housing element or and now this caught up with or the general plans caught up with the housing element. I don't know which way. So the general plan and the housing element are coming forward together and there's an environmental impact report prepared for both of the documents. And they do include traffic study and analysis of sewer and water. What there is inadequate water to serve these housing sites. And so the city would have to approve a statement of overriding consideration because there there is inadequate water for these units. So the cities expressed that concern when we first received the allocation and the appeal was rejected. So we we have to plan for the units regardless. Regardless and and the Water District has plans for providing water supply, but at the moment, no, we don't. We don't have water supply.
Hi, I grew up here for the last seventy seven years. And I object to.
And could you introduce?
To Sacramento and forcing us all, the communities throughout California, to build additional housing, whether we like it or not. And I really object to taking away the tennis club here on on Dordy Dordy Drive in Magnolia to please a few house, a few, we have enough housing already. We don't need any more housing. We we need we we need the recreational and service service places that these other people have talked about. And just to comply with what Newsom wants, I think is ridiculous. This is our community, not not their community, it's our community.
You can bring your vote to issue.
It's our traffic problem.
Yeah.
It's our water problem. It's all our problems, not Sacramento's. And I think that's horrible. I'm I'm against a lot of this, a lot of it, and particularly Mount Tam Racket Club.
I didn't catch your name. Probably sorry, what was your name?
Bob Pet.
Pet.
Spelled B as in Bob, E T, E T T E.
Thank you. And I hope you can put your, you can vote. I mean, this is why your vote matters in in general elections and local elections.
Hi there. If possible, I would like to remain anonymous, if that's okay? Great. Um, I would like to applaud and thank the city of Larkspur and interested in developers to getting on board with all this, get getting Marin into the twenty first century by adding additional housing. I'm all for every single development that's been proposed. One, one issue I have with the proposed development on the Cost Plus Plaza site is noise pollution from the adjacent freeway. There's no physical barrier in between the land there and the freeway. So I have to say, really, I'm concerned about noise and noise pollution.
Noise. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, please. You know what? Can we just let everyone speak? Everyone has different opinions, so thank you.
Hi, my name's Christopher Gakis. I've lived here for fifteen or no, I'm sorry, like, sorry, twenty, twenty one years. And thank you again for for answering some of the questions intermittently throughout the presentation. A lot of the a lot of this is new to me. I haven't really participated a whole lot in the community, in this part of the community aspect of things. And just understanding the 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 process is really important. Because obviously we're gonna come to a point where we're gonna have a lot of choices to make. And I think everybody here is gonna have want to have some say in that. So it's good to know that this is the first kind of or second or third inning, I guess, of how this thing is gonna play out. I think from my perspective, you know, I think about when people come to visit and when whether it's San Francisco or out of state or out of the country. And I'll walk them around Larkspur downtown and 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 we go for a hike up in the, you know, King Mountain or up on Tam and then we walk down to Left Bank or go to the Peso. And it's just such an incredible experience to have this special little downtown, this little this very little little bit left, this little slice of, I hate using the word Mayberry because I probably get a lot of like, I don't, I'm not trying to use that connotation at all. I don't want people to think about like that as a a non equitable kind of environment because I actually agree with the first speaker. We do need to have. I mean, we're not gonna stop it. The wave is coming, so let's do it as smartly as possible. And from my perspective, you know, I think preserving this very special place we have of downtown Larkspur, which is literally, you can't go anywhere in the country and experience what we have in downtown Larkspur. It is such a jewel. You know, and and we can and like we we did the math, we did the math on all these other places around and I'm not saying I it's not. You know, and and you know, things landscapes want to be certain things, right? Lucky doesn't want to be a housing unit. Lucky wants to be another grocery store. That building is another grocery store building. Right? And and those in those areas in Larkspur Landing, those large areas in Larkspur Landing and the other development sites, those want to be multi-family, higher density populations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
Uh, thank you guys for having this hearing. I I just want to say for a minute that this is what makes America such a great country. And local involvement is is really, really good and people showing up and and being interested is is really, really good. So I think the people that kind of live in the communities that are impacted should probably have a lot more say than people that live hundreds of thousands of miles away and are just looking at data points rather than actually being in the trenches and living lives in these communities. I think that the area in downtown Larkspur I'm opposed to, and that's the main thing that I want to voice. I think that it is limited by traffic and its impact on traffic. It's already completely clogged. There's no capacity to expand roadways. There's wildfire risk, there's flood risk. And there's kids walking, biking around. We don't really need more cars and and more of all that stuff happening where there's gonna be more accidents and things like that. So I think that that is not a great area to expand in. Whether or not expanding housing all over is is a good idea or not is not to be debated in this context. But if we're gonna do it, I think that the area in Larkspur Landing makes a lot of sense. When we're talking about making communities more equitable, a lot of the people that would live in those communities probably wouldn't necessarily have, or some of them would, but some of them wouldn't have jobs necessarily in Marin. Marin doesn't isn't like thriving with lots of corporations coming in and employing people. It would probably make it very easy for them to travel across the Richmond Bridge and go to work or take the ferry into San Francisco or take a smart train or use the bikes and and there's capacity for roadways and expansion there. That's much more desirable to have high density housing, lots of transportation, all of that sort of stuff. So I think that that makes a lot of sense and it still has a lot of great walkability because it's close to stores and and all sorts of stuff like that. I think the Mount Tam Racket Club is a part of the heart of the downtown community. It serves people from one year old to a hundred years old as their place of gathering and community, including high school students, et cetera. I think it really needs to stay. It's part of what makes Larkspur such an amazing place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I say, thank you for being the first commenter to actually put in a make a recommendation as well. So again, we are looking for your recommendations and the sites that would work.
What was your name again?
And your name, yeah.
Jodhsem Ganatra. All right.
Hi, thanks, guys. I know this is all extra time for you and volunteers. I appreciate what you do and hopefully we have more people coming more often. This is my first meeting as well.
And your name?
My name's Anjali Ganatra.
Thank you.
And I wanted to support the building of, I would like the building, I like what you mentioned, like levels A through E. So the Larkspur Landing, the Marin Country Mart, the vacant site that's already there, those seem like great proposals and maybe adjusting. You said that the Marin Country Mart was approved only for twenty units, but it could have more. So I think reassessing that, we lived there for a bit and it was great, like having access to the retail and the the ferry. So that's a really lovely place to live. I think in Larkspur, if if we can't change some of the things that are coming, making sure that we have community space. I like how Rose Lane developed, but that promised community space is still sort of an empty space. And especially for a lot of the kids and school students, it's nice to have a place for them to hang out. So I don't know if we do have a development and if they promise a community spot, if we can say, well, that goes first, like develop that. And then everything else you're going to develop so that we have what's promised and the the little the spirit of downtown Larkspur and a walkable community is really good. Yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ganatra.
I'm Ari. And thanks, everyone, for being here. And I I am opposed to Mount Tam being a housing development area because it's an area in which my family and I and my friends go every day. And it's health benefits to older people and younger people are that are like very big. Because my grandma goes there every day and I go there and I swim there and my brother swims there. And my parents play tennis there sometimes. And it's just a very community centered place. And if we were to develop apartments there, I think it would take away from the community aspect of Larkspur, like most people are saying. We kind of the traction of Larkspur is the smallness and closeness and tight and how tightly knit it is. So if we put in apartments in like every corner on the street, I'm over exaggerating, but it kind of take away from the coziness of Larkspur.
Thank you, Ari.
Thank you very much, Ari.
So articulate.
Big shoes to fill. My name is Zach Laire. I live at Creekside neighborhood in Larkspur. Good to see some friendly faces here. I'm pro development in general. I'm pro progressive. Thinking about how we can move the city forward and thinking about, you know, decades from here. That said, I have a couple of questions and so I just was hoping maybe question, couple of answers. First question is like, what ability does the city have to garner additional resources and revenue to accommodate additional housing? If there is a thousand extra units put in, do are there any abilities for incremental revenues to be procured from the state to accommodate additional resources that are needed?
Housing developments would provide the city with any funding other than?
Yeah, we have two thousand additional people in the city.
So property taxes would, all the sites would be reassessed and property taxes would come to the city.
Subsequently after they're built.
Right.
Okay. You there is in there is inconsistency in when you were talking about sites and talked about interest from owners. And then Alan, I think it is, or Alex. You didn't mention interest from owners on each of the site. Can you reference specifically Site J? If there's interest from owner? Mount Tam Racket Club.
No con, I've had no conversations with the owner of Mount Tam Racket Club about any housing project.
So for certain properties we know and for certain properties we don't?
I believe, yeah.
Okay. Why for the Mount Tim Rocket Club were there far more units proposed per acre than for other sites?
Uh, well, it is a large site and I believe that I was looked at.
You know, it was our housing element consultant that put it in as at a hundred percent of the maximum. Just because it is, yeah, a large.
But per acre.
Oh, per acre, it's the same twenty or thirty five to forty five as the other sites downtown.
It's not relative ratio. You look at the other, if you look at the parking lot or the Lucky, it's far more units per acre proposed.
Oh, proposed. They're all they all have the same maximum building capacity. They're all they're all allowed to build up to forty units an acre, but in the housing element, it was predicted to build a hundred ninety six units. I I just think that they.
Why per unit per acre is that more?
I think because they just thought it was a really feasible site to develop, our consultants. So they had they had done the the hypothetical construction plans for that site and they it was they put it in because they thought it was feasible to develop at a higher density and the others were not. Because of other commercial, probably because it would be a hundred percent affordable or sorry, a hundred percent housing, whereas the other ones would come with commercial and other mixes of uses.
Okay, but that's already currently.
Thanks, we're we're we need to.
Okay, a couple, can I just ask a couple more questions?
No, you can. You can get back in line again, but there's a lot of people wanting to speak.
I'll get back. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, so this is, let me just say, well, there's been a couple of comments and Elise can comment on this, but a lot of people are talking about taking away Mount Tam Racket Club. And again, this is not something that we're proposing that is done. But the developer, whoever or the owner of Mount Tam Racket Club, it's private property. So the issue is is whether or not a developer So the issue is, is whether or not a developer would want to come in there. And, and that's what our recommendations are going to end up being. Uh, and it's not, we're not saying that none, none of these sites are going to be taken away per, per se. And one of the flyers I think that was circulating seemed to indicate, and I think one of the reasons that a lot of people were very angry is that it was an implication that somehow these sites were being taken and developed, but that's not the case. This is, this is all a zoning recommendation by the planning commission. And then it, it's again, up to the free market as to whether or not they're developed.
And I also want to clarify is we can't force any owner to do anything. So we can't force the owners of Mount Tam Racket Club to convert the, the property to, to housing development. It's not something that can be forced to happen.
Well, it's currently zoned, i- and so the recommendation that, you know, that the planning commission and the city council would be, what is feasible to be, to be allowed? So again, this is not a fait accompli that's going to happen. This is just where we have to come up with certain recommendations regarding zoning. That's the whole point of this process.
And, and there's also a world where an owner, and I don't know who the owner of Mount Tam Racket, Racket Club is, and I think it's a fantastic club. I personally would hate to see it go away. But they could say, I want to make more money and I want to try and do something with my property. And they come to the city and they want to develop. Again, I, we can't control what they want to do, but what we can do is put in guidelines and put in protections to protect our city the best we can. So that's what we're trying to do and we're trying to elicit comments from you and get information from you. So we're hearing everybody and it's not just what staff thinks and what we think. That's what we're trying to do here tonight. So.
All right, so let's, let's keep going.
Hi, I'm Sally Marshall. I live at the terraces at Rose Lane now. I've lived there for the last three years. Prior to that, I lived elsewhere in Larkspur. Unlike the first person who spoke, I moved to Larkspur because I wanted to live in a suburban area and not a high density downtown San Francisco atmosphere. I recognize that it's not Larkspur's decision that we have to build nine hundred or a thousand or whatever units. That's, that's being forced upon us. But I urge you to put those units in areas where high density housing is better accommodated than our charming downtown area. Larkspur Landing area would be great. Uh, it seems to me like, and I'm not an expert, it seems like there's a lot of open space there that could be filled with multi-story, high-density housing as opposed to downtown Larkspur. Um, as a speaker, a couple of speakers ago said, Larkspur is truly charming. Let's not wreck it. And you do have control over what the owners can do with their property if you don't rezone it.
Um, just, just to comment on, on that, um, I was the person who went to the twelve housing, uh, element committee meetings. Um, trying to do what you were talking about. We're trying to find places because it looks like fighting the state isn't an option. And, uh, so what we were trying to do was, was have as little impact to everybody as we possibly could.
Okay.
Hi, uh, my name is Terry and I live on Magnolia Avenue and I've been there for about forty years. And I have questions more than anything because this is, I'm very naive to this. And I almost feel like a fear, a fight or flight type of a feeling, um, when I first got the notice. But I think one of the things I'm concerned about is who would I go to above and beyond here for my concerns regarding what the state is mandating in Marin County as far as putting in fourteen thousand units between now and twenty, um, I, thirty-one, and I noticed I went on the, into the local news today and there is a indication that, um, population of California is decreasing and the population in Marin is decreased. And it's one of the fastest growing areas in the Bay Area with the population decreasing. So I'm wondering why these mandates are put into place by the state of California? That's one of my questions. And who would I go to above and beyond here to find out more about that and to fight against that? The other thing is, I grew up in the seventies here and we had a mandatory moratorium on building. And I'm curious why that isn't so now when we are in a drought state and we always will be and we always have been. That's another question. The traffic impact is horrible. I live on the four, I live on the corners of Doherty and, uh, Magnolia and it's awful. Also, is Kenfield and Ross having to do this? Really? Are they going to have to build nine hundred units?
Well, they.
They have their own numbers.
Their own number.
Every, every city in, in Marin.
And, um, does what we say really matter? And do we really have a say in what happens or does this just, do we get a vote for this?
Well, I will say you have a say because that's why we've spent the evening coming here.
I understand, but does it really matter? Because we could all be sitting here talking and it's still going to be, they could still be, build nine hundred units if that's what they want to do, whoever they are. And so I, I think that's my concern. Is it really, what we have to say here really important?
Well, it matters into, I mean, they are going to want us to build a nine hundred and seventy-nine units. So you're accurate in that, but I think what your comments can, and, and feel free to chime in. It's, it is, it will direct us into how, how, how to do that.
So that's what the, the state assemblyman, so the, or person that be the person to, uh.
Who would that be?
It, who's.
Jared?
Con, Conley, and then we have a vote. Everyone has a vote. I, I, I think what you're going to find is the people here up on this, you know, podium as the planning commission think exactly like you do. And so we vote. I mean, you know, that's, that's, that's the, thank God we can still do that. Um, so, um, that's to answer your first question. And the other questions, yes, every city's got to do it. And the consequences of not doing it, as, as the staff pointed out very eloquently, is developers can sue, the state can sue, individuals can sue, they get fined, we don't get money for roads, we don't get money for, I mean, they have a lot of things at their disposal to try to make us do these kinds of things. So the only recourse is to vote.
All right. Thank you for your time and thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marsha McCall. I live in Greenbree. Beautiful city of Greenbree is in the beautiful city of Larkspur. Been here for thirty-six years. I was wondering before I start my two minutes, may I please have just a few seconds, thirty seconds to represent two other my, of my neighbors that asked me to speak on their behalf?
You have two minutes.
Okay. Oh, I see. All right. I'll quick. Pat Chica lives, is an eighty-three-year-old woman who lives on the corner of my street, Villa Cumbre in South Leceo, number two Villa Cumbre. She's lived there over fifty years and she very much, uh, objects to the proposals of the, across from us on Sir Francis Drake and Drake's Landing, Project Number Thirty and Forty. And, um, she's against the extreme height. It would totally ruin the character of our, our entrance to Greenbree. And she has had to put up with one month of construction of the landscaping there, which has been really awful for her. Of course, we all appreciate that landscaping, but she had to bear the brunt of a constant noise, constant dust and a lot of other inconveniences. So she would not be looking forward to having a huge building built across the street from her, uh, and up on that hill. Okay, my other, my other neighbor who's anonymous is very much objecting to anything being built there on that one eighty-nine Sir Francis Drake. Um, it would totally change the character of the community and the entrance. And also that person has a question about the mobile homes there on, um, you know, across from near Industrial Way, near the, um, Nellin, where all those mobile homes are on the other side of one-on-one. How could that possibly be developed in the future? It's just a question to consider. Okay, for my comments. Um, I am objecting to the zone change, uh, of one thousand Drake's Landing and one eighty-nine Sir Francis Drake, changing it from the T four SMS to the T four SN, because that would make the property, the height out of character totally. Fifty-five feet is way too high. And we live close to that and it would be impacting us in many, many ways, all those buildings there. It would change tremendously the entrance to our beautiful community and contribute much to the traffic. Now I want to comment about concern I have, the infrastructure. Every developer has to pay toward improving our infra, infrastructure if they're going to be doing anything in our community and building housing. You have to consider not only the water and the roads and the traffic, but also the schools. We're going to be having tons more kids coming to the schools. The traffic is going to be horrendous. Where I live, it's so bad, so many times, just trying to go over to Larkspur Landing, et cetera, or any other parts. I'm concerned about, uh, okay, what I would like to see is the empty lots like Larkspur Landing, um, northwestern Magnolia. Some of those empty lots I'm in favor of, but I don't want you to change the, the character of our lovely community by overbuilding and building too high. So very much against the fifty-five height. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Gus McGovern. Uh, thank you for having this meeting this evening. Uh, I am a third generation Marin native. Uh, I grew up in Larkspur. I went to school here at the local schools. Uh, I'm now the owner and operator of Yang's Martial Arts, which is at five forty-eight Magnolia. Uh, some of you may have been students or have, uh, they're your children in my program. Uh, we, we have used the word commu, community a lot this evening and, and I think that's what is attractive for people to come to Larkspur. And, uh, I think that places like the Racket Club and the Martial Arts School, the, the art school are, are paramount for, for students, uh, for children and adults alike to, to come and, and be a part of this community. Uh, I vehemently, vehemently oppose, uh, the zone change for the areas, uh, J through O. And my recommendation would be to start, uh, with areas that have not been developed, that are vacant lots. And then from there, uh, look at, uh, the, the beginning of the alphabet that you guys listed, uh, areas such as the, uh, Larkspur Landing area. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lori Emerson. Um, I've lived in Larkspur for about fifteen years now and I've had a business here for about twelve years. I'm next door to Gus. I have an art studio right on the bike path there. And we've had our businesses here for a long time and we've withstood the pandemic. And, um, we've been servicing the community for, um, many years now. And we feel that, uh, to rezone our property and the other properties that service the community would be a, um, an incredible disservice to the community. Uh, and I just had to add that if I had to move, I would also need to leave Larkspur if I had to relocate my business. So you would lose business owners as well. Um, because if I couldn't do my business here, I wouldn't be able to afford to live here. So that's an affordability thing right there. Um, so my recommendation is the areas that have, that are more appropriate and feasible. The Larkspur Landing sites, I think, as noted before, for all good reasons. Um, I just don't think it's fair to displace business owners that are, businesses that are thriving and providing services to the community. Um, I've been told that if I had to vacate, I could come back after it was developed. Um, I don't know if I could afford to do that. Um, I don't know what that means really and how long it would take. It's very vague. Um, and if we rezoned these places, then you're basically laying out a red carpet for a developer. So, yeah, so you, we do have control. We, we have control by not allowing certain areas to be rezoned. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Philip Cherry. I live in Heather Gardens. This is my fifty-seventh year in Larkspur. I represent the Octogenarians and I want to bring to your focus, uh, the group that was here during my generation wanted to retain the small town character of Larkspur and they put in great time and effort to make sure that happened. Some of the names like Joel Munstrom, um, Joe, there's a lot of names, but anyway, it's a, I think one of them just left, but, and this guy's been around for a while too. So I don't know what you can do, but, and I see this, this octopus type thing for the, with the government coming down on you. I appreciate your time and effort. I worked for thirty-five years on the library board, so there are times that it's tough. Stick in there, do what you can to do the right thing for our little community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nicole Sternsich. I live at five eighty-seven Magnolia, which is right across from the Lucky Shopping Center as well as the tennis club. And, um, I wrote a letter already, but I want to recommend after listening to the sites that, um, I'm recommending also for the Larkspur Landing area as well as the Cosbus area. Um, there's things that can be done with windows when it comes to freeway noise and you have a beautiful view of the water from down there. Um, and I, and if there has to be building in downtown Larkspur, which I object to, I would plead that you lower the density. We don't need three-story, four, I mean, I don't know if it would be four-story buildings. We don't need that in downtown Larkspur. That will destroy the charm. We, I live next door and both sides of me, all around me are historical landmarks. You would have these big, huge buildings that would just destroy that as well as the fact that my child just the other day was almost hit by a car crossing the crosswalk right at that main intersection of Doherty. You put that many more cars on, it's dangerous for our children. You develop the railroad track. Do you know how many kids come down every morning on that bike path to get to school, to get to Hall, to get to, to, um, the high school? We need to, we need to preserve those places and I also support all those small businesses that are along there. My son goes to those art schools. He goes to those, um, martial arts. We go to the club. We've got to preserve the charm of this town. I've been here for, I'm a Marin resident. I grew up in Mill Valley. Um, fifty-four years I've been in, in Larkspur since two thousand and four. I have seen people here are talking about development. They're talking about progress. I have seen what decades of that has done to this area. And I, I can no longer love Mill Valley the way that I used to. Larkspur is my new home. Larkspur is what Mill Valley used to be. It is the only town that still has no parking meters. That to me, it's a, it's a welcoming, you are welcome here. So please, please, please don't put these things in downtown Larkspur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Webb and I've lived in Kenfield, Larkspur area for sixty-eight years. My father used to say, change is good, Lori, you gotta go with it. You know, you can't be a stick in the mud. I don't want to be a stick in the mud. I live up in, uh, Villa Casitas up near Tamalpais. When you add the density, you change the flavor. It's just like cooking or something. It just changed the flavor, changed the, the way it is. The parking, the traffic up there is incredibly, um, dense and, uh, we've, I live on spyglass, so we have water concerns. Oh, they say you can't use as much water. I adding more people, I, I, I see the need and I don't want to be, um, like uncivil and say, oh no, not in my, you know, you can't live in my area. But you can't squeeze blood out of a turnip. I mean, there's just so many people you can put in an area and say that's living. I live across from the Tamalpais. I might as well be in San Francisco. You know, it's like five or six or I don't know how many, eight, ten. You want, you know, layers high. You want, you know, ten more of those buildings up there? I mean, is that going to be better? Is that better for Marin? Is that better for California? Is that better for, um, Larkspur? I don't think so. I'm glad you all are here and you're fair-minded to say, hey, no, Lori, you need to, you need to be fair. But there's no water. There's no parking. And, uh, it's just, it's not the beautiful place it was sixty-eight years ago. I granted that might be greedy of me sixty-eight years, but I think we need to still think about heading in the right direction. Making it good for Larkspur, making it good for Marin and making it good for California. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Hi, um, my name is Linda Chauncey. I live at six twenty-seven Magnolia Avenue. Uh, the lights from the, uh, Mount Tam Racket Club. Mount Tam Racket Club tennis courts are shine into my bedroom window every night. But I would be happy if it stayed there. I know that has nothing to do with your jobs. That's up to a developer to develop that property. I'm opposed to it. I'm also opposed to any development in the historic downtown Larkspur. I volunteered for the Historic Preservation Board for a number of years, copy edited the Larkspur Past and Present book. Live in an eighteen ninety five house that I have not stopped paying to redo since we moved there, since it's so old. But I would very much appreciate if the housing being considered would be Larkspur Landing area, the Marin sanitary district area. Those two areas would be my first and second choice. I don't understand, even within the historic district, the area that's between the Lark Theater and five seventy seven Magnolia. I mean, there's a paper street there, so wouldn't that be city property? Not a landlord that owns that paper street called Post Street there? Does anyone know?
That's something proposed for development, just the two sites north of that.
So not the parking lot right there?
No, not the parking lot.
So just that land, that grassy?
The land there, correct.
Okay. Well, it's still within the historic district, which I think was also on the National Register. And I know early in the meeting you mentioned there would be consultants for that sort of thing, so I would appreciate that. But I'm not opposed to housing where Lucky's was, but we really I hope in whatever is discussed that a grocery store would be a part of what would be mandated to be a part of the development. I don't even know if you can do that, but we're sorely missing having that service here. The traffic on Magnolia, I can't even back my car out. I live, I have to back out, one of the few driveways on that stretch of Magnolia, just north of Doherty. Nobody is kind enough to let me out in the morning or in the afternoon. So to add a lot more traffic to the downtown and to the Tam Racket Club area, I don't think would be a good idea. Thank you. And I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Hi, again, Dave Steinberg. I just wanted to finish my opposition to the Tamalpais. I'll do I'll do it quickly. All the delivery trucks they have blocking the road, and I gave you a picture with a time and a date stamp on it showing it parked illegally. Okay. I think it would increase tremendously if they increase the density of this building. One more thought I had, and I was in law's control manager for a couple of years, and you're a lawyer. You can tell me if I'm wrong. But these trucks block access to fire trucks and everything else for hours when they pack up on the road there. If someone dies at the Tamalpais because a fire truck or an emergency vehicle couldn't get through. And I think the city would be partially liable because they've been notified about this for years. They've been given evidence from other people, and they're not doing anything anything about it. Okay?
Thank you.
Hi, Zach Leir. Again, three quick comments. One, could I make a request that we do get interest from the Mount Tam Racket Club owner on record as a point of consistency? Mark Harris, he lives in Mill Valley. He bought it six months ago with the idea of developing it. So I just love the idea of that being on record. Two, I would ask that for any of these properties that we do what we can to add mixed use as a component of it. It seems like this is an overwhelming comment as it relates to the Lucky site, as it relates to the gym site, that mixed use be a mandatory part to the extent. Now, my third question or comment is, is there a plan to have coordination around all these sites as we try to get to the number? Or is it get three hundred? Get two hundred? Keep going? Or is there a plan to have a coordination of eight sites if they're all recommended and try to figure out how those all mapped to the total number?
It would be coordinated, like similar to what's been mapped today, just we could eliminate sites or they could shift housing from one site to another. So but it'll come as one map and one zoning overlay. If that answers your question?
Yeah.
It's coming as a package.
Okay, thank you.
They wouldn't be built as a package, to be clear. They would be submitted to the state as a package.
Zoned as one package.
They'll all be in the housing element for this cycle.
Like, that's what we're deciding. That's what we're not deciding today, but that's what we're discussing today is what package.
But we have no control over when they're built.
Okay.
Long term Marin resident. I understand you guys have got a real problem on your hands how to deal with this. And respect you for taking it on. Not going to comment on what you have to do, but I want to comment on what it's going to look like. So I've got a a comment here that I'm going to give to Elise. It's about design, the optional design, whether that the optional design standards are
Objective design standard.
Design standards. So I just want it to look good.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wendy Sekuzo. I live at five seven seven Magnolia, and I support what all my neighbors have said about the safety of people walking in the street. My community members, I myself almost get hit at least once a week. I'm against high density housing on Magnolia in downtown Larkspur. I think we need to focus on Larkspur Landing and the Drake Landing area. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'm Gail Connolly, and I've been here forty years. I'm wondering about if there's any way we could handle this like Petaluma did back in the nineteen sixties and seventies when there were other mandates that they had to develop, and they didn't have the infrastructure. And they they filed a lawsuit and were exempt for several years before they had to start following in line. I don't know if we can do anything like that. I also I also wonder if there's any way we could join with another city, for example, somehow join with San Rafael. San Rafael is now putting in six story buildings. And in downtown San Rafael, it would be so easy to get nine hundred living units there if we could somehow join up with them, and that would be very creative thinking in order to do that. The other idea I had was I did want to question what it will happen with the Mount Tam Racket Club because I do understand about I guess about a few months ago, it was sold to someone. And I don't know if we will have the club anymore. It would be really nice, especially in your decisions making, to know what's going to happen with the club. And the final decision or question I have is, there's this wonderful little group of houses right underneath the Buck Fund. It looks like there's about two or three hundred of these three story units very close together, surrounded by greenery. Why can't we find a spot like that rather than filling in the few empty spaces that we have? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Debbie Harowitz, and I wanted to to tell you to take in consideration the new library and community center is going in right across the street from the site, Mount Tam site. And for hours a day, there's three schools on Doherty. It's like takes hours every day to get through to go to the freeway. So if you're gonna, there's gonna be a community center and a library, new library in that big lot that's set aside. And then you want to put housing in Mount Tam. It's just going to be too packed. So I'm really, really against downtown, you know. And to take that in consideration, all of the cars and everything that are coming in for the new city community center and library, that's, you know, just take in consideration of that. It's already jam packed in that corner. So I'm really for, like so many of us, I'm really for Larkspur Landing. If we're being forced, let it let it be Larkspur Landing.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Keith Fontana. I live in Madron Canyon. I'm actually a builder, pro builder most of the time, but I definitely am against building in the downtown, anything other than just revamp what's here. Keep it historic, keep it the the cute town that we have. I'm definitely for if we got to do it, I would say Larkspur Landing east of the highway. That's definitely the area. What would be appreciative of the city workers who actually do get paid would maybe instead of just saying that we always have to bow down to these state politicians and the government and everyone saying that we have to do this junk. It would be really helpful to maybe give us a little bit of information on how we can actually fight it. Because I would actually really like to just say no to this whole thing. We don't have to do this. And what are they going to do? We don't even have water. It's crazy. What are they going to do? Make us build units and not put water in them? It's it's just a ludicrous proposition to ruin an amazing magical area. And that goes for all in Northern California. This whole density, it's it's crazy. We do not need mass density. We have traffic problems. We have every kind of problem you can imagine that comes from density already. And to just go on this whole thing like we have to do it, all I'd like to say is say no. We don't have to do it, and it would be really helpful of the people that get paid by the city who work for all of us that live around here. Please give us some information on how we can actually fight it instead of just saying we have to bow down to this. Thank you very much.
I have a few comments. I'm Kevin Carroll, a city council member. Been sitting here since a half hour before the meeting started, sorry. On our website, there's a section that says government. Click on it. It says elected officials. The first two are Damon Gongley, our assembly member in Sacramento. The second one is Mike McGuire, who is our state senator and now is a power broker in the state senate. I believe he's the majority leader. Now, these are the people with the power. These are the people that you need to be yelling at. Both of them avoid me at every meeting that I go to because they know what they're going to hear from me and members of other city councils. We're screaming about this. The other thing you can do is one of the biggest movers and shakers about this is Assemblyman Scott Weiner of San Francisco. Contribute to his opponents. Write him. These are the people with the power, because when you say fight these people, no library. We went from the worst roads in Marin County to are now rated the best roads in Marin County. And in fact, in the Bay Area is now the city of Larkspur because we listened to you. And you passed a tax to help us pay for those improvements. So it's very easy to say, let's throw stones, but there are real world consequences if we don't meet these numbers. This is the start of the process. It hasn't even gotten to me at the city council yet. So you're going to have plenty of opportunities to speak up. As to the Mount Tam, there's nothing we can do at this point. It's private property. Do you want people telling you what to do with your property, that your house is too big? They don't want to see you. The other thing I would encourage you, if you are a single family homeowner, is, she briefly mentioned it, but today the supervisors, I believe, agreed to join with Sonoma County for this A T U alliance. You can get free plans, free building plans. Okay, you don't have to pay for an expensive architect. That is one of the ways. And start thinking about your future. Are you going to want to move out of that big house and still stay on your property in a smaller unit? And help all of us at the same time. That number already dropped one hundred before we join this consortium. So please, there are things you can do than just throw stones. Help us work through this.
Thank you very much, sir.
I just also wanted to say that it would be really helpful to let people that live more than three hundred feet away from these downtown properties, for instance, to be aware of this. The first notice I saw was posted on the Lucky building. I mean, who even goes there, right? I was walking from the cleaners to the post office and happened to walk by on the fifth. That's one week ago. Then I got the notice in the mail that day. One week in the holiday period. I mean, is that the normal amount of time that you send a notice out to people, one week?
So no, no notice was required to be mailed. I believe I tried to mail that out two weeks prior, but then the mail is really slow. So we'll try to, the best way would be to sign up for emails, contact us, check the website, sign up for planning commission emails and city council emails.
Will do. Thank you.
But email, if you get us email, we'll get you, you'll you'll get it right away.
Yes, sir.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I was afraid I was going to be the only person who showed up tonight with the holiday. I I have general comments and specific comments, and I will give as many as I can and maybe come back later with the others. My specific problem is with giving up the city parking lot, and we would be the developer there because we own it. It would only give us twenty units, but believe me, those twenty units would not be worth the sturm und drang, the firestorm that would be created. First of all, this is not surplus land. It is heavily used. Parking is in short supply in Larkspur downtown. There have been consistent discussions downtown with the city council, problems involving parking in connection with parklets. Private parking is no substitute for public parking. This is an historic open space, and its preservation would be especially important if we have large buildings adjacent to it. It has just been relandscaped at great effort by the Larkspur Community Foundation. This would be basically a giveaway of city land to developers. A prior proposal to develop the parking lot many years ago was hauled down. The adjacent landowner who is considered, who is mentioned in the plan as possibly being involved is notoriously uncooperative, and collaboration would be a pipe dream. And finally, there is no way that no reason that our little city should distract itself from higher municipal priorities by swimming with development sharks here. So restrict that proposal, please, to surplus land, which we don't have. I see I'm getting already close to the the end, so I might have to give you more. But just the final point is, I think we're going beyond what the state, what would be required to satisfy the state. For example, we have just one example. The recommended buffer by the state is fifteen to thirty units. Our buffer is forty one units. The state requires using surplus public lands. We would put up a non surplus land. I could give you a lot more examples and would be happy to do so. But I think we are going above and beyond what the state requires, and we should do as little as possible and then consider this a negotiation as Councilmember Haroff said years ago.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holmes.
One comment and question. I wanted to echo the sentiments that were expressed before that I I kind of feel like at least a part of what is being done by the city should be a step back as to whether this is a fait accompli. I mean, I I just don't think that this country would have gotten to the point where it's at if everyone sort of said, well, this is just the way it is, and we have to accept it because they said so. Starting with the British, going all the way through the South and the Civil War and Vietnam and everything. I mean, I just, I just don't, I don't accept that as true. I think it's 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 our city. It's our town. It's our state. It's our country, and we should have a voice in the matter. So and misguided propositions where there's no water, like it just doesn't make any sense. There's no water, but we have to build more housing. It's like Southern California probably shouldn't have all the water from Northern California coming down to build, you know, gardens and deserts. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but it was done, and it doesn't make sense. So anyway, that that's my comment. My question is, can you clarify, because there is a lot of energy around Mount Tam, what it is zoned for right now? And what does it need to be zoned to in order for residential development to happen there? Because the councilman also said it's inevitable. They can do whatever they want. I I kind of want clarity on that.
Okay, stop.
Okay, stop, excuse me, staff will address that question.
So the current zoning now, let me pull it up here one second. I think it's called Transitional Downtown. And I believe the current density is 21 an acre, right? Yeah, so it would be an increase of, I think at the max, 14 units an acre there. Or, excuse me, yeah, 20, 24 to 45, I think. And I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the second half of your question about.
He said, what is it zoned? Currently, it's not just zoned commercial, it is zoned for allowing for residential use as well.
Yeah, multifamily.
Multifamily, yeah.
There are sites that are zoned commercial that are on the inventory as sites to be developed. So it's not necessarily that it would be a guarantee that if it was commercial that it would come off of this inventory. But that's what we're here for, to discuss what is on the inventory and what may or may not be done to that list.
Can I just get a gauge of how many comments we have left to come? Just one and two.
Well, if you've already spoken. Yeah, well, I mean.
Well, is it, if it's three comments, because we are getting to 915. Okay, so if there's three comments, that's great. We could just proceed with the three comments. Thank you.
I just have a question. On South Aliso Drive, there was an old nursing home that was converted to a homeless shelter. And there was a huge, huge objection. And there was a petition of thousands of people that signed it. They didn't want it, but it went through anyway. So this makes me nervous if, I mean, you're hearing so many people here don't want downtown disturbed. And it's already crowded. So when all those people objected to a homeless shelter, it went through anyway. So can you talk about that homeless shelter went through?
The homeless shelter was a project Home Key, which is a state project. And so they did pass law that said, essentially took away any city. We couldn't, we couldn't, we didn't have any zoning control over the development of that site because it was a former nursing facility. So essentially, let transitional housing be a right for sites that had certain uses. And so the city just by right with just a building permit, so the city had no say over it because of. Yes, so 44 units were constructed there and that counts towards our 979, bringing it down quite a bit. And those are extremely low income ones, so it really helps on that end of, for the sites. But in terms of can anything be built here today? Yes, if someone comes in with a housing project, the city has very little control over what gets built because of all the state laws. So even if we don't do the rezoning, some of these sites can be developed because we currently allow housing on them. And there may be very little that we could do other than applying our objective standards.
Thank you, next comment, please. We have some quiet, please have some quiet for the next comment.
My name is Rob Roberts. I live in the Larkspur Isle condos. And thank you for volunteering to do this. I can appreciate what it's like to be on the other side of the table, so thank you. If we're forced to add eight or 900 units to the Larkspur. I think putting them near Highway 101, Richmond Bridge, the ferry, the train, makes the most sense. Having lived in San Francisco for 20 years before deciding to live here. I've seen this sort of play out where a lot of great businesses, let's say in the Valencia corridor. Were really fun to go to, restaurants, music venues, art stores, art galleries. The city allowed them to turn those into residential and let people live in them. And it really just sort of dried up a lot of the community fun aspect of why you would want to live in San Francisco. Which is why I moved here. And I would hate to see that happen here. And switching gears, I would love to see a grocery store come back into the Lucky location. I think we all would. I think, not to get nitpicky, but I think to have a pharmacy there with the grocery store would be really great to you, like we used to have. So if we have to do it. It would be great to do it near where there's so much mass transportation. And not focus as high a density in the downtown area where it's already pretty trafficky. Like everyone has already said, it's pretty hard to get in and out, especially during school hours. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is our last comment for the evening, thank you.
Keith Fontana again. I just have a quick question. So on this 800 plus units, if no one builds them, then what?
Not, oh, it works for one second now, okay. We're not penalized if no one builds them, except that in one sense, which is there's a law SB 35, where if we're not meeting the numbers, then we have to allow by, like ministerial by right development on like all the housing sites. So it, we're penalized in that we can, we lose discretion over housing on other sites. But that's somewhat the case today, anyway.
And then if these 800 units are built, what happens in eight years? Do we have to build? Eventually, you're gonna run out of room. So we're already, I think all of us saying, and I think you guys even agree, we're pretty much out of room now. So when is it enough? Or are we just gonna start building skyscrapers on top of everything to just keep going?
I believe that's what they expect us to do is to increase density and increase height. And that's what they would expect us to do.
So even more so, I mean, if we're gonna start saying no, we should say it now because it's never gonna, it's never gonna, we're never gonna comply. It's just gonna comply for eight years. And then we're gonna have to comply again, we're gonna have to have this all over again and over again and over again.
That's some, that's essentially how the housing elements work.
Got it.
Elise? I think in Larkspur Landing area, they allowed buildings up to seven stories.
Correct.
Right? So they're already big. Okay.
Well, thank you so much for your comments this evening. We're gonna bring it to the commission for discussion. I think if we have any questions or any follow up for staff, we can ask them tonight. And then we're gonna revisit this topic again. Yeah, no decisions are, just to reiterate, no decisions are being made tonight. This was for us to hear from you, and there will be further opportunity.
Yeah, we'll let everyone know, we'll take all these comments back and revisit those sites.
So we're gonna have the opportunity to comment?
Yeah, we can comment and we can make, and I had, we have questions, you know, yeah.
I don't wanna.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but Natasha's question, I just want to make a comment that, as I said before. I share pretty much everyone's view here that we're overdeveloped in the downtown. And I will do everything I can as a planning commissioner to stop development in the downtown historic district. Because I've lived here as well for 30 years. My wife's a second grade teacher here. And I believe that Larkspur is a unique place and that to develop the downtown would be tantamount to destroying the, it makes this place special. I also agree that developing around Larkspur Landing and those sites like that can be done in a nice way. I believe in ground floor, commercial and maybe two or three stories of residential above. And there are some areas, like I've always felt that the Nazaree property could be developed if that individual who owns it wanted to do so. And that's been like that for, God, 40 years. But the point is, is that we are all on the same side. And I think that it's important to understand that as planning commissioners, our job is to listen to what you have to say and also to execute that. So thank you for coming tonight.
So as a follow up to Jeff's comment, people are free to leave if they want to leave. You're very welcome to, or you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the discussion. And there are further items on the agenda that we're gonna discuss that are not related to this. So, so just to let everyone know. As a follow on to Jeff's comment, I think we heard loud and clear that a lot of people would prefer not to touch downtown and prefer to go over to Larkspur Landing. So what, how do we address? How do we address that in terms of reevaluating the density numbers that are currently in here? For Larkspur Landing, Drake's Cove, Cost Plus, I mean, can we request that you increase the density for those sites? To try and make up for some of the numbers?
Yes, and then we'll, we need to take into account whatever comments the state sends back to us. And also if we could meet the requirements for furthering fair housing, if we shift so much away from our single family areas where, because they'll be looking at how many units we're putting in different census tracts. But I think, since there's housing currently available here, there's ways to address that.
Because, I mean, maybe we look at it so we don't eliminate some of the downtown sites, will you reduce the density, reduce the height? And maybe this means going back to the development standards that we put in place. And maybe we have to revisit that so that we allow increases over on the other side of the freeway, but we have more restrictions when it comes to downtown. And the, whatever the number of the Mount Tam Racket Club site was, because we had a lot of comments on that again tonight, too. So is that up to us to give you something specific?
Alex could just confirm if the owner has any interest in developing over the next eight years? Because if there's no interest, then we could just, I mean, that would eliminate the site right off the bat. And even if it's not, if the planning commission wanted to eliminate it from the list, that's certainly something to do.
But maybe it doesn't matter what the owner wants to do, because do we?
Well, if they said they're not gonna develop it, it should be off the list.
So we just take it off the list, we can do that.
But you could take it off the list tonight.
If we take it off the list, we just don't count it towards our allotment, right? Our 875. It could still be developed, we just wouldn't be counting it.
And it would get the, the sort of easy path to development by the by right overlay.
Right, right.
Just remind me which one that one is, that was Jay, right? So that was 169 units. So that's quite a lot of units, right?
Yeah, I think, I think the question is if you do that and other people don't come through.
Well, they're primarily market rate for that site. There are some affordable housing, but if other ones are bumped up, we might be able to. Or some other larger sites could, will, would definitely support construction of even 100% affordable housing projects. So there may be, like for the county of Marin, I think a lot of their sites, they'd put a lot of their sites in as 100% affordable housing projects. Because we can, so we could be just suggesting that others be developed at a higher, higher number. And because there's so many market rate units at that site, I think the numbers should be able to be adjusted.
But who defines market rate versus affordable? In other words, what if the people on the Larkspur Landing decide they want to sell expensive condos that look out at the bay?
Right, that is definitely a concern, so it may be worth revisiting the 20% requirement or some type of requirement. And having again enough buffer, even if things are in Larkspur Landing, enough buffer that if one of the sites doesn't develop with the same amount of affordable housing that the others will cover the, the number.
So I think it'd be helpful for us to see what, how much we can increase the numbers over on some of the sites on the other side of the freeway. And then we can maybe work backwards on that and to see how much we can then reduce some of these other sites. That was one question I had. The other one was, you can mention, right at the beginning, you said that we, so we got 44 units from the development over at South Aliso. And then the rest of it was made up by ADUs?
Primarily ADUs, because the Magnolia Village project's 20 units, it hasn't been, the permits haven't been issued for that. But they're entitled, it's an entitled project. So I believe most of them are ADUs, we have, we have a lot of ADUs.
So, so it sounds like a lot of, so I mean, what's that, like 50 ADUs we're getting?
There's been recently, I think like 25 about a year. And, but we're not allowed to project that much in the future because they won't accept that at our housing element. Or it would have to come with a lot of programs to support it. We could definitely try to do that, though, is bump it up, say that if we've been building 25 a year, we're gonna continue to build 25.
And that was my question, was how much?
I think it's worth, I think that's definitely worth trying and with some justification. Our consultant wasn't willing to do that, but I think we should try.
That's like at least a couple hundred units we could do.
Because it, we could show we're permitting those. And this new program should really assist homeowners in adding the units.
So is there a world where we could include the ADU numbers then in this?
To reduce the 875.
We could do that.
Yeah. Okay, I think. I think we're at 875 with just 49 ADUs, but 49 seems really low to me for eight years.
Is your expectation that it was just a lot of people that would, who wanted to do ADUs and just quickly came, kind of came forward and did them? Or are these gonna be fairly consistent number?
I think those can be fairly consistent numbers. There just seems to be a, and as you see, some people don't necessarily use them as.
Right, yeah, we learned that.
It's sort of free F A R, basically.
Yeah, but and also, I think we do have seen a lot of people that want their relatives to come and live with them, too, so.
Okay, so that was another question. And then what can we do if we wanted to say, for example, that if, like at the Lucky site, that they say we're okay with the development of residential above that and the density that's being proposed here? However, we wanted to mandate that that could only happen, there's a condition in place that there needed to be some kind of grocery store? I mean. I mean, how?
I can't speak about that site specifically, but in general, I think we could ask the city attorney if we could be that specific. Since we're giving an overlay that's giving a bonus, they're underlying, they're underlying uses for commercial, it still exists, but maybe they can that, we may be able to specify uses. Because what was going through my head for a couple of them, which is somewhat like the.
Cost Plus Plaza is.
It's just because it's possible to speak to the owners and work out kind of what we want there and to see what they want to build. And, and then it's almost like a development agreement would be, a city would make a development agreement with the developer. This ordinance could serve somewhat as that development agreement.
I mean, yeah, you could make a development agreement such that you're not necessarily giving them a stick, but a carrot, like for instance.
Right, they would know that they could build a grocery store and housing and they'd be getting approved because we're supportive of it.
Or some, you know, special consideration for other things.
So that for any of the sites, if you have any special requirements, like it was mentioned numerous times about requiring ground floor retail or some component of retail, that those are things I think that what we could talk to the attorney about.
But we lost that like very quickly at the Magnolia project, for example, so. So we could. I would just hate to see that happen again, especially like where Lucky's is, like that site there. But I, and all the shops that are down, downside there. But I, and I guess also what might be helpful for everyone, although there's a lot of people have left now, is how much control do we actually have over that? Like, again, that's private property, so.
Well, we're giving, we're just doing this overlay, so we're not taking away anything from them. We're just giving them a bonus in order to, the whole purpose of it is to encourage them to develop housing in the next eight years. So it would, if, if it doesn't, if it's not a bonus to them, and then the units won't be built, then the next round, we have to do different.
Right, but if somebody comes in, but for the owners of the Lucky site, right now, is that their only option? Is to put in another grocery store because that's what it's zoned for? Or can they do something else?
They can do any, any use that is a permitted use, or they can apply for a conditional use permit to get.
Could change the use.
Yes, there's, there's nothing that restricts that site to only a grocery store. That is one of their options.
Got it. Oh, they want a pharmacy too.
That'd be nice.
And we would love that, is again, it's, it's, from what I, what we're understanding is it's, we need a pharmacist or an owner of a pharmacist to come in. If you know anyone, it's safe way.
Wait, no, wait, I forgot that the city attorney is actually listening in, so we could ask him.
Who's listening in?
The city attorney.
Oh, is Sky on the line?
Yeah. Hopefully, he's not asleep. Hopefully he's not asleep.
Do you know someone who works there? You could. Get them to, you do. Is, is, is Sky gonna address the question or?
You have to have street facing businesses. You cannot dictate economic success. You can dictate that planning and zoning. But at the end of the day, the reason I was going to sit in another seventy-two to be, we succeed or does. So they're in this community for thirty-five years and much lucky valuet's in me, whatever you wanna call them by day. The reason they don't, didn't succeed is there's too many grocery stores around you. So we can all jump up and down and knock these things, but the economics of those grocery stores don't work.
What, what's your name? Sorry?
It's John North.
John North. So uh, on that comment, if. I mean, this is the expectation, and if we, that, if we did try and put a condition in place, then we would. Detract any developers coming in to build the housing. Because now they're not gonna do that if they're gonna have to put a, a grocery store in. I mean, that's the argument we're up against.
My recommendation would be to speak with the property owners to see what they wanna build. Because if it's helping them facilitate to do something they already want to do.
Right.
That might be a carrot.
Well, that's my point, is that you, you, we, as Doc, as Mr. Nor just pointed out very eloquently. You can't, you can't give sticks. You can give carrots. Uh, but they have to be pretty significant carrots to make things economically feasible for these stores to uh survive. So it is what it is. Yeah, I, I understood, yeah, yeah.
And I assume that same argument applies to the um, the tennis club.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a grocery store a long time ago, if you recall.
Like we all want it to be there, but we can't make it be there, so. Oh, and um, do you, or can you talk to? What other cities, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. Um, what other cities have done? In terms of pushing back against the state, cause I know there were a number of cities. And I thought at some point, cities within Marin County had joined a lawsuit.
I don't know what the status is, but there is some type of lawsuit or um, also I think um, an effort to. Put something on the ballot to try to regain local control over zoning matters. Um, but I don't, I don't have details on that.
Well, if you go back and look at SB thirty-five, um, which was initiated in, uh, approved in, in two thousand eighteen. When the bill was finally approved by Jerry Brown, the city of Huntington, California sued the state. Because they didn't feel like, a lot of Lo- Los Angeles communities and specifically Huntington Beach sued the state, uh, and they lost. And they chose not to appeal. So that was uh, what happened with SB three, which we're all familiar with because of the North Magnolia project.
I, I would be curious to know what has happened to date. Just so I understand, and in the event, cause this come up, this comment comes up a lot. It's like, why aren't we fighting back? And what, what would it cost us? Like there's gonna, if, if we ever had to fight back, it would be very expensive. And let's get an idea of like, how much this costs the city and the taxpayers here. Cause it'd be great if we could fight back, but I have no idea how feasible that would even be. But if we could address that comment, um. Those were most of my questions that, did you have any questions?
Um, I think you covered most of mine, you know, about the grocery store and what we can require. I guess I, I don't have any, any, any other specific ones, just more, I guess, comments, but. I'll let everyone else speak.
Nothing, nothing. Okay, well then. Thank you very much. I think we've been closed then the um, public portion of the meeting and um. We'll bring it back, I'm gonna go back to the agenda. Where is my agenda? Here it is, yeah.
The old Dixie, that um, site, that huge Dixie.
Wind Dixie.
Site where there's a lot of apartments now.
You mean with the windship site?
Yeah.
Wind cup, thank you.
Right there now.
Yeah.
I mean, they did it and there's a lot. I don't know how many units there, but there's a lot. And it's right by the freeway. I mean, if we're being forced, it should be, you know, by a freeway.
Right, yeah, and, and I think we heard a lot of comments tonight, so on, on that same thing.
It's the site, you know, how many apartments went in there.
Yeah, as a, okay.
There's a lot.
All right, well, moving on to the business items, I think we need to approve the um minutes. Thank you very much. Um, so we have two sets of minutes that we need to approve. Can we have a?
Yeah, I have a, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of. September twenty-six and November fourteen.
Uh, can we have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson is absent. It, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Um, and do we have any planning commissioners' reports?
Um, only uh, and I'm not sure how much, at least I, I. Relative to the library uh, selection process.
Oh, I mean, because they're talking about it tomorrow night, correct? The city council?
I think so.
Um, I don't know if you haven't, can reveal whatever they're considering. I'm sure that's fine to announce.
Um, so we did select, we had um, originally, I think there were eleven uh, design build companies. That were interviewed mostly by uh Julian Skinner and Dan and a few other people. Which brought it down to three and then um, we had multiple meetings, some quite long. Um, and presentations by the various firms um, with architectural drawings. Everybody worked really hard at it and we selected um, very closely voted on a vote. Um, selected the team that we're going to um, have, move ahead with it, so.
So the city council, I believe, makes that decision tomorrow night.
Right.
Their council meeting.
Why I'm not giving names out at this particular point, but um.
Thank you.
That's it.
And thanks for all your work on that. And we really should have acknowledged that you've done a lot of work on the um, Housing Element Committee as well.
It was a lot of work.
And I kind of.
And, and it's was very frustrating work because as, as everybody has seen here. The, it's sort of a done deal, so it's, you're trying to find the best sites that have the least impact to. The character of the downtown, um. So anyway.
It, it might be worth in a future meeting, if maybe Brock could talk a little bit about his experience on that committee.
Yeah.
And how they got to some of these sites and how difficult it was and maybe, maybe we could think about.
Yeah, we, we went through the same thing where we went, we don't want eight hundred and, nine hundred and seventy-nine units in Larkspur. But uh, we were led to believe that this was not a choice that we could make, so. So we did the best we could in terms of trying to find sites that, that made the most sense.
But we could consider that.
For landing does, you know, but it can't, it can't take it all.
Can't take it all, yeah, so we could consider that maybe in a future meeting if you wanna.
Sure.
Talk to that. Election of Chair and Vice Chair.
Okay, so um, it's been, I think, a long time since the Chair or Vice Chair was elected, so we put it on the agenda for tonight. So that someone could start the, the new year, but um, it's okay if someone serves again or um.
I would like to make a motion that Natasha Chalmers be elected as Chairman and I'll stay as Vice Chairman unless someone else wants to do that.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
It, it is interesting though that I'm, I'm the only one here who's been before you guys really. And um, it, it was just a, literally a shift every year. You picked the Vice Chair and then they moved up at the end of the year. And we usually had a party.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We did?
That was, yeah.
Oh, shoot. I didn't know.
What were we just doing?
We could have brought cupcakes for everyone.
I think she does such a good job.
We had cookies.
You do a great job.
She does a wonderful job.
Sure Jeff would do a great job.
I don't think so.
We don't need to have the party yet because you're still on.
Well.
One year.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So I guess to, to Brock's point, is this even permitted? I mean, I'm, I'm happy to.
We'll let you know, but I. To make sure there's not a term limit, but I think it's fine.
Yeah.
All right.
Excellent.
Oh, shoot, I, maybe I was supposed to have a party for you all. All right. We could do it again, we could have a, yeah, celebration next month.
In that case, uh, let's have a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll move we adjourn.
Second it.
Thank you very much. This is to the end of the planning meeting to now.
Yeah.